I'm here, thank you.
Sanders, Corbin Sanders.
I'm here.
Mr. Fresh?
Hello.
Ms. Cohen? Wait, okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Marin?
Yes, hello.
I thought I heard you earlier, sorry about that. Ms. Sizmore Heiser?
Hi, sorry, this is Ms. Cohen. I spoke for Ms. Cohen instead, so I'm here.
I knew I was confused, okay.
And I'm here also, this is Ms. Sizmore Heiser, I'm here.
Okay, I see Dr. Anderson, Ms. Bukarski.
I'm here.
And Ms. Darnette Kofax.
Here.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. We are here to receive the audit report in the vein of moving through as quickly as we can so that people can get their questions answered. I am going to turn this over to Ms. Coe, our Auditor General, so that she can do her presentation and we can get to questions after that. Thank you, Ms. Coe.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Keith Tamara. So, good afternoon, everyone, and Happy New Year. And first, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the School Board to allow my office to present today the Office of Auditor General Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Report. It sounds to be far away because we're in fiscal year 2021 already. As many of you know, that 2020 had been quite an unusual year for everyone, and the auditors are not exempted. But then, today, we have a lot of exciting accomplishments to share with the School Board and the community members who are watching today. So before we start, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce my team members who are with us. They are Ms. Theresa Weatherman, Ms. Danielle Moore, as well as Mr. Chris Elliott. So with that, if I can have our clerk to pull up the report for us. And I saw Mr. Paul Hex is here too, so we have four different team members here. Thank you, thank you. So, the Office of Auditor General started putting the annual report together about two years ago at the recommendation of the Audit Committee. And while fiscal year 2020 has been quite different than the previous years, our office has accomplished all the approved tasks under the pandemic impact. We have been remained innovative and agile in completing our four pillars of work. They are, number one, risk assessment. Risk assessment is a holistic framework to prioritize OAG audit work. And number two is our bread and butter, which is our internal audits, of course. And then we also manage our fraud waste and abuse hotline. And last but not the least is the outreach and education effort. As many of you have echoed in the past that we must further enhance our communication with our FCPs employees, as well as our community members, so that we are not only doing the good work, but then also the stakeholders are fully aware of the work that we have completed. So in this annual report, I will be walking you all through the accomplishments in all these four areas. So if we can go to page one, that we start the annual report with our OAG structure. So it's page one, which talks about the School Board and then also the Audit Committee. So OAG is an independent office reporting directly to the School Board, and functionally, we are reporting to the School Board Audit Committee. The School Board Audit Committee includes four School Board members, as well as two citizen members. And then the audit charter on page two of the report is an extract from our policy 1105. And 1105 is the Auditor General Authority. And then on page four, it reiterates our mission and also how we do it through the four pillars of our work. So with that, I would like to pause for a second to make sure that we are on the right page. We are actually, if, Madam Clerk, if you can move on to two pages further from this? Yes, yes, exactly. Thank you, thank you. So here is the page that I am currently talking about. So our mission, I think it is important to state here in this work session so that that all the stakeholders are aware about why OAG exists and also what mission and what are the important work that we are doing here within FCPs. Our mission is to independently determine whether the ongoing processes throughout FCPs are adequately designed, functioning in an efficient and effective manner, and be fully accountable to our citizens. And as I have said, how we do it is we do it through the four different bullet points that outlined on this page. And on the same page, you can start seeing that we have included OAG value here. So you may ask what they are, right? It is our first year to develop value indicators to measure the efficiency in OAG operations and also our impact to the system. We are starting with these indicators and we are looking at expanding them in the future years. And this attributes that we currently have focus on the budget spent on our function, on the audit functions, the number of auditors per student enrollment, etc. We also looked at the completion rate of our audit plans and as well as the management recommendations, whether the management accept them or not. It shows that that both numbers, the last two, the audit plans and also the recommendations, they are completed at 100%. So when you look at the other column at the far right, which we extract some data points from the Council of Great City Schools, you can see that we are well above the average in terms of our completion rate, as well as our budget spending and also how many auditors per the number of students enrolled. So we have set up a very high bar for us to continue to strive for efficiency within OAG. And then we are also very grateful, as you can see, that our recommendations are fully accepted by management. So it also tells a very important point is that while OAG, Office of Auditor General, we maintains our independence, we are also very grateful for the support from the management to further enhance the controls and processes at the system. So with that, we can turn to the next page that started talking about risk assessment. So on the top of this page, we talked about the methodology of what we adopt to process the risk assessment, that we looked at different risk factors, including the financial factors, operational, as well as the reputational risk that are faced by the system. And if any one of you would like to understand a little bit more about the details of this methodology, we included a link to our risk assessment at the bottom of this page, so that you can click to. We also just begin to with our fiscal year 2022 risk assessment. So as a plug here, I will be reaching out to all of the School Board members again to solicit your inputs towards our upcoming audit topics for fiscal year 2022. And then at the bottom of this page, it talks about the FY 2021 audit plan. And as you can see, the top three audits that are listed there, which include the construction contract audit, the procurement and contract management audit, as well as the local school activity fund audit for the past fiscal year, they have all been completed. And for audits listed from four through 10, we are currently in the process of doing because they are part of the fiscal year 21 plan. Since the focus of today's discussion is on our FY 2020 audit work, so that we won't spend too much time on it. But again, I mean, if you want to know more about the objective, what are these audits that are coming along, the link is included at the bottom of this of this page. So with that, then we will go on to the next page, and that will be focusing on our internal audit process. We are trying to create this graphic so that that as a community members or as our any FCPs employees could understand our audit process in a very simple way. It always begins with the very important, the critical part, which is the risk assessment that I just talked a minute ago. And once we identify the audit topics based upon the risk assessment, then we start our audit, which involves the planning, execution, and reporting. The last piece under here, which is point number five, which is, I think to me is one of the most important piece out of the five, is the audit follow-up. So that that is not just, okay, our office, our auditors have done with an audit, then we will move on to do the other thing. It's actually not quite so. We will review the follow-up with our audit clients, meaning FCPs management, to ensure that the audit recommendations that we made from the audit reports are completed in a timely manner. So and then also our office report the statistics to the Audit Committee on a quarterly basis. And then after that, I also share the statistics about the audit recommendations completion with the School Board members as well, so that we are all holding the management accountable that what we put down on the audit reports have been followed up thoroughly. So with that, then we can move on to the next pillar of work, which is our third one, is the fraud waste and abuse hotline. Our office received inquiries through different mediums, including an anonymous hotline and also through direct mails and emails from citizen members, as well as from our employees. You can see that with the pie chart in the middle of this page, we have received like 32 cases during fiscal year 2020. And on the graph, within the graph, you can also see the types of the different situations that come in, which include like use of assets, residency, procurement, conflict of interest, etc. And then there's also a bar chart next to it that shows the number of cases from fiscal year 2018 through this year. And when we are getting more data in the coming years, of course, we will be doing more analysis and better focus our audit energy on the areas that we should. During fiscal year 2020, right before the COVID hit, we were able to distribute a very eye-catching fraud waste and abuse hotline, which is orange in color, to all the schools as well as administrative buildings. And I was also able to provide a training to the School Board administrators to raise awareness of when and how to use the hotline. And the page afterwards, it focused on our last pillar of work, which is outreach and education. And as I have started off, I really think that this is very important because no matter what is the good work that we have done, but if we do not have an effective communication channel, then our stakeholders or community members or employees will not know about the existing channels to provide fraud waste or abuse hotlines or to take a look at the audit recommendations and see how we together can improve the systems controls and processes. So the first thing listed here is the Audit Bus. So for those of you who may not be familiar with this item, this is our periodical. We have tried to do it very often now. Most of the time, we are up to like a monthly publication of the Audit Bus. And I am also very grateful for all the School Board members have helped us to share this with your community members. Through your community database, that you can share this with your communities. So you can see that that our Audit Bus subscriptions has gone up quite a bit since we start two years, two, three years ago. And now we have over a thousand people subscribed to the Audit Bus. I think this is a major accomplishment because by collaboration more with you all, then the our community members and our employees know more about who we are and what we do and have be able to build up the trust further in our system. And then we will continue to do the mid-year and annual report as described. And thank you, Madam Clerk, yes, if you can go to the page next. And I would also like to highlight some of the training and education accomplishments that during last fiscal year, actually more through March before COVID hit, we were able to provide approximately 20 presentations to over 900 employees, including staff members from all walks of life. And we will also be able to present it to two Fairfax County Community Associations. And we also received a visit from the other part of the world, and again, this is before COVID, that we received the Inspector General of the Indonesia Ministry of Education. So we are really proud of that because I think by doing this is increase our connection with our global internal audit quality and also the connection with others in the other part of the world that who also hold this audit work is really important to them. And at the later part of fiscal year 2020 and beginning of fiscal year 21, we also, our office also started to facilitate a group within the DC, Maryland, and Virginia, Northern Virginia Auditor Group, where we meet once a quarter so that we can share, you know, kind of what we see, you know, respective school districts and be able to share our best practices. And then, and there is one other thing is we created our online internal audits webinar. And this is more school-based focus because we have 200-plus school sites so that that we prepare this school audits-related training online and then all the staff members will be able to take it. And during this fiscal year, we are also very grateful for the management to recommend this becomes a mandatory course for all the first-year principals, so that the first-year principals can grasp kind of the fundamental audit requirements within the local school activity fund audit and the other audits that we conduct at school. And last but not the least, this year, we also accomplished a national status from the National Association of State Boards of Accountancy that OAG championed for. And now FCPs is a certified provider of the NASSPER CPE. Meaning what? Meaning that for me, for example, I am a CPA, Certified Public Accountant, that I can receive CPEs from FCPs and we can provide our in-house FCPs training to support employees who need these certifications. So considering our office, the Office of Auditor General, we have a staff of eight, including myself, that we have achieved quite a bit and it was pretty busy during the past fiscal year. And if we can move on to the next slide, next page is the internal audit results. Again, this is the bread and butter of what we do. And the following few pages summarize kind of like the fiscal year 20 audits. And they are respectively, they are the local school activity funds audit, the performance audits on grants, time and attendance, and the construction contract management audit, procurement and contract management audits. We also completed business process audits at schools. And you can see at the table of the top of this page, it summarizes the audit results, audit results in terms of the completion date, how many audit findings that we made, and also observations at the top. And then at the bottom, from page 10 to page 13, we highlight the objective of each of the audits. And then we also link the electronic audit reports underneath each one of them. So if we can then go to flip to page 13, page 13 summarized the non-audit services. Thank you. So last year, we completed the trace analysis. It is something that the School Board requested after we presented the fiscal year 19 Trace and Staving Reserve Audit Report. So we did a few objectives underneath this non-audit surface. And for those of you, if you are interested to see the full trade and staving reserve audit report, you can see the link here. And then the last service that we mentioned here is the key initiative initiated by the School Board, which is the comprehensive program review of our special education services. So we have started this project since October. And of course, we have done the request for proposal a while back on it. And then the actual review, we have kicked off in October 2020. And then this is a two-years project. And some of the key items, the review timeline is listed at the bottom of this page. And then the last page of this report included the appendix because I know that nowadays, we are really have a lot of like, you know, electronic documents. So we think about ways to make it easier for our community members and for our employees to find the information that they need. So we created this links map. So if anyone that would like to learn more about each of these four pillars, then they can just click and then it will direct them to the exact information. So as a wrap-up for my presentation, that looking forward for FY 2021 to complete and FY 2022, we will continue to work our way through our approved audit plan and which we will be accomplishing them both in person and as well as virtually because of the current situation. And again, we are really thankful for the support from the Audit Committee, the School Board, as well as the FCPs management team for the collaborative work environment. So with that, I would like to hand the time back to our Madam Chair, Ms. Keith Tamara, and see if anyone has questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. We are always grateful for your expertise. Before we go on, or maybe you can think about this when we take the next question, I would really, we've had the opportunity as members of the Audit Committee to be able to hear some of the results and recommendations that you've been able to make to improve our processes. So if you'd like to give a summary of that at some point, I think that would be beneficial because everyone doesn't get to benefit from being in the Audit Committee meetings. Now that I have perhaps hopefully not blindsided you with that question, I will go to Ms. Omech and give you an opportunity to respond.
Sure, maybe just let her maybe address that and then I can go.
Sure. Up to you, Ms. Coe.
Yeah, I would love to, and thank you, Ms. Keith Tamara. I think it is a good way to start. I actually have my team members online, Ms. Theresa Weatherman and also Danielle or Chris. I'm thinking that maybe we can take a few minutes to just give a highlight of the key outcomes from the audit. Let me see if any one of them can speak up and just wait for a quick second.
Hey, Esther, I can talk about the grants management and the construction contract management audit. I don't know, do we just want to kind of go over like the objectives and just summary of the results?
I think maybe for the benefit of the School Board, it would be great to highlight the objective first so that we know what we are looking at and then the key findings, the key results from it.
Okay, sure. So I'll start with the Grants Administration Accounting and Monitoring Audit, since that comes first on the little table on page 10. So this audit was completed earlier back in FY 2020. And the objectives of this audit were to determine if there was an adequate management control framework in place with respect to the governance and internal control to support the grant-related activities. So that's looking at the framework done by Financial Services to oversee grants as a whole within the division. And secondly, to review and assess the proper use and allocation of grant funds and compliance with related grant terms and conditions. And that was looking at a sample of specific grants to just review the financial transactions and the terms and conditions of those grants, etc. With this audit, we determined that FCPs does have a framework in place to support the division-wide grant activities, which is covered in Regulation 5970 entitled Grants, which provides guidance, authoritative guidance on grants. And FCPs also has a grants manual, which describes the specific processes and responsibilities of personnel throughout the division. FCPs grants are also subject to oversight by various entities, including the grantor agencies, which could be the state of Virginia, federal grants, there's also private grants. All FCPs federal awards are subject to audit as part of the Fairfax County Government Single Audit, which is a look at the federal funding as a whole from the county, and FCPs is a subset of that. So while the FCPs framework does provide a heightened level of assurance that the objectives are being met as they relate to grants, FCPs, or we found that FCPs can improve its control environment by clarifying, updating, and consistently applying existing processes and guidance, documenting key grant information better, and developing a formal methodology for assessing division-wide and grant-specific risk. Those are outlined in finding one of our audit report. And with that, we have three recommendations, including for the the grants team, the Financial Services Grant Team, to make some updates to Regulation 5970, which has been completed at this time. And that was reported to the Audit Committee at one of our follow-up meetings. Also, for Financial Services, to document key grant information in a centralized repository for all of the currently active and newly awarded grants, and to develop and implement a methodology to assess grant risk. Our second finding was related to two instances of non-compliance with grant terms and conditions. We didn't find any grant funds used improperly, however, there were some conditions in the grants agreements, which were not followed exactly, and those are summarized in finding two of the audit report. And with that, we had two recommendations. One related to a reimbursement resolution from the School Board related to the technology funds, as well as for Financial Service Grant Team to provide additional training. I know with the COVID-19, that's been delayed a little bit with the training. But most of these recommendations have either been completed or are nearing completion in the first quarter of this calendar year. So that's, I'll pause here and see if there's any questions related to the grants audit.
I think maybe, Ms. Keith Tamara, should we maybe summarize it a little bit more further for each audit? And then should we pause at the end?
Yeah, I think we will pause at the end. And if you just want to pick out maybe a couple that you think would be of interest to the whole board so that they can have a better idea as to how thorough the work the office has been, and then we'll take Ms. Omech's question.
Maybe we can, since Chris is online and talking, maybe we can go over a little bit about the construction contract management, because I know today we were talking about the CIP. And this may be something that the School Board may be interested at. And then, okay, so Chrissy, if you can just highlight the key aspects of that audit.
Sure, okay. And so the construction contract management was working with Design and Construction, who wasn't responsible for the CPA, CIP, but they have parts in the communications there. But Design and Construction is responsible for administering and monitoring design and construction service contracts for the FCPs Capital Improvement Program projects. The objectives of this audit were to review contract and procurement administration and management processes of design and construction services as it relates to the design and construction services, as well as confirm that contract administration and management processes are being followed. And lastly, to evaluate vendor compliance with contract terms and conditions. So as a result of this audit, we identified eight findings and made 16 recommendations. I won't go through all of those right now, but we did have, I believe, four moderately rated findings, which you can see in that table on page 10 of the annual report. I can just go over those briefly. But our first moderate finding was related to the records management model, or manual, sorry. And so we have a recommendation to make sure that the FCPs records management manual reflects reflects the requirements noted in the Library of Virginia retention and disposition schedules for uh public records. Our second moderate finding was related to daily reports, which are um FCPS's recording of the activities at a construction site on a daily basis. We did find um that there was gaps in when the reports were completed. So there was a couple of months over the summer where a report may not have been completed at any time for a certain project. So those instances are noted in our report. And as a result of that, we um recommended that Design and Construction take steps to reduce the likelihood that daily reports are not submitted. And um also to um for Design and Construction to develop procedures to enhance the reliability of the information as some of the information on such as the weather that day um didn't quite match up. Our our third moderate finding was related to the Design Evaluation Report, which is a report that, according to Policy eighty-two twenty, should be represented to the School Board when recommending architectural and action engineering services for contracts at the School Board overseas. However, we were not able to find any such report. So we did encourage DNC to collaborate with the School Board to establish and define requirements for that report that's noted in Policy eighty-two twenty, and also for DNC to present that report, once it is determined what it might look like. And our last moderately rated, risk-rated finding was the School Construction Liaison Consultant Project Allocability. And with this, we found that school construction liaisons for capital improvement program were invoiced at CPS by a vendor, however, or they were invoiced by one vendor, however, that vendor was only contracted to Port Farm Services for one project and not the three that they were invoicing for. So I know that some corrective actions are in progress for that, and we'll report on that shortly. But we did have quite a few recommendations um for DNC, including to ensure that project costs are allocated to the correct project and to determine the the liaison, additional information on the liaison services. So that's the high-level summary of the Construction Contract Management Report.
Thank you, Chris. And if I may also take a quick second uh to talk about, a little bit about the procurement and contract management audit too. Because I think as an auditors, we sometimes will focus on the not-so-good news. And I think we should also share some of the good news that that we noticed during the audit. And um so for those members, if you have your the report up, it is on page twelve uh of the report, titled Performance Audit of Procurement and Contract Management Audit. The focus of it is a follow-up uh from the previous year procurement audit focusing on sole source practice, how FCPS has been improving throughout the years. When we looked at a trend analysis that that the utilization, we saw that the utilization of the sole source contract procurement method has been trending downwards during the recent fiscal years. The numbers of the newly awarded sole source contract has been decreased by almost eighty percent. And then the active sole source contracts decreased by twenty-eight percent from fiscal year sixteen to fiscal year nineteen. Um and after we did this audit, we focused on looking at the adequate management control framework in place with respect to governance and also the compliance with the Virginia Public Procurement Act, et cetera. And we did not identify any findings. So I just want to thank the procurement team and the Financial Services Team for doing, you know, all the key works in this very important areas to increase the transparency for our procurement. So I just want to see if Teresa, if you have anything else you would like to highlight for our School Board at this time for our audits?
I did see her raise her hand.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um Danielle doesn't have access, so I'm going to cover the results of the time and attendance audit. That audit, the focus of that audit was to review the existing control framework over time and attendance policies, procedures, regulations, um including fairly standards, and determining whether or not our systems were adequate to detect or deter non-compliance. We were also looking for areas for improvement. And we had three findings. The first dealt with the proper documentation, approval and verification of substitute time. We had an issue with uh temporary hourly employee accurate reporting. That was the reporting of the appropriate hours for temporary hourly employees, and also the timeliness of updating regulations. All three of those particular potential issues have been addressed and have been closed out. So while the audit identified three areas where improvement have been needed, HR and Financial Services have taken the appropriate steps to address those and and close whatever gaps existed there. The other audits that are listed, Esther, you've already covered um the procurement audit that Danielle did. So I will move from procurement to the Local School Activity Fund and Business Process Audits. Uh the Local School Activity Fund Audit is the audit that's done annually to review the activity funds of each school, how they're managed, and to opine on the cash balances. In addition to the audit looking at the propriety of cash balances, we also look at the controls to see if there are any areas where improvement may be needed. And similar to the Business Process Audits, we're looking how schools have implemented control over their financial processes, their reconciliations, timeliness for reconciliations, how they're managing uh cash and other receipts when they come in, how they're documenting and supporting their disbursements, and their just general overall accounting procedures. The results of those audits are discussed with the school principals, also shared with Financial Services, and issued in a separate report titled School Activity Funds Audit Observations Noted. And if you look at the the report that was issued this year, most recently, you'll find that we have seen dramatic improvement in the controls at the individual schools. Out of two hundred and three sites, the FY twenty results showed a hundred and forty-three sites that had no observations at all. Thirty-nine sites had three or fewer observations. And then we only had one site that had a a greater number of observations. And that particular site um had some significant turnover, and they were in the process of working to tighten their controls. So we don't anticipate seeing those repeated in the future. And we'll also put them on the list to go and take a look at later in the year to see how they're doing. So the Activity Funds Audit, and then we do what's called the Business Process Audit, where we look not only at the controls over local funds, but we also are looking at the controls over appropriated funds in our schools. We've conducted many of those in fiscal twenty, uh as Esther described. And they have similar findings as what I just described for the School Activity Fund Audits, where we're looking at the controls over each of those processes. And these particular audits, we do ask schools to provide a response to let us know what they're going to do to address any issues that were noted. And those are usually provided in the report as well. The majority of the time, those audits have no findings. But for those few where we do have findings and controls, it's usually a documentation issue where they have not um gotten prior approval or they may be missing a particular itemized receipt or something of that nature. But we're not, we have not identified significant control weaknesses in the schools. And for when we go into schools and we see weaknesses that we think need to be addressed, those schools are recommended they reach out to Financial Services, and Financial Services provides them additional guidance as well. So I think that covers all of the audit reports that were included in in the annual report. Esther, you took care of the contract and procurement, and I think that covered the financial report and time and attendance.
Thank you, and back to you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Ms. Omech.
Thank you, and and that was very helpful, so I'm glad y'all went before Ms. Ko and and team. Really grateful uh for you guys and the professionalism we always do this work with. I I I have a question about um how the resources of your office, you know, whether that be staff time, you know, are spent. If you can speak maybe a little bit to the top five way, places where you end up uh spending the most. I'm thinking in terms of percentages, right? Because you did list out, you know, audit services and non-audit services that you guys work on on a regular basis. But to give us a feel for how this service, which is your office, is uh spent.
So is a great question, Ms. Omech. I mean, we have been uh thinking, right? Because how we spend the time, meaning how, you know, what is more important for our office and for the School Board, you know, to think that that our office should dedicate our resources on. So thank you for the question. And I would like to say, right, if I may answer you in the four pillars of work, because that's kind of the major categories of things that we do. I would like to say that that we spend definitely over half of our time, fifty to sixty percent of internal audits. I think we have to, because this is what we call to do. So while I do not have the actual numbers in front of me, I would definitely say over, definitely over half, or even seventy-five percent is on that. And then on top, we also spend maybe five to ten percent on risk assessment. It is a pretty long process, and the reason why is because we want to make sure we really think it through before we determine what are the topics to look at, right? And then we also spend maybe like ten to fifteen percent on the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline, because some of them do develop into a bigger preliminary review that we spend quite a bit of our of our staff time on. And then the remaining time is on outreach and education, is more to take stock of what we have done and then present it out in a, in a more layman term. Because if I keeps on using my audit tech- technical words and no one here or not, sorry, not here in the community, maybe they would like, what are you talking about? So we have been thinking ways to how to use graphic or how to use more easier-to-understand term in our outreach and education effort.
Thanks. Can you dive just a little bit more deeply into the internal audit piece? I'm especially thinking, you know, you you mentioned the non-audit services, like the special ed review that we have, or the fidelity implementation investigation, if you will. Right, so can you speak a little bit more to that?
So let me just sure I answer it correctly, as is up to your expectation, Ms. Omech. So is it, your question is, how about the non-audit service and the other work that we do? We actually, um even though the terminology is a non-audit service or more, I call in a audit term is a review, it is part of the internal audit. So we consider that as part of the internal audit. For the special education program like you explained earlier, the role for our office is to facilitate it, to make sure that we are on track. And also, the researcher can get to the right person, get the right data, and do it timely according to the uh timetable that we have laid out for the School Board to look at. So um that definitely is part of our bread and butter and include as part of the internal audit work. But in terms of the, what, so is it to your question? I just want to make sure I answer correctly. Is it about what specifically do we look at during the internal audit? Or I just want?
Yeah, I know. You know, I I'm trying to distinguish, so for example, the Activities Funds, right? That's something we always do, we have to do. What chunk of your resources is that taking compared to some of these School Board commissioned uh requests, if you will? You know, like the Fidelity of Implementation piece, the special ed report.
Got it, thank you. So um each year, right? Like, uh for example, last year was the first time that I worked with uh some of your, like the new members who watch you all through about our plan. So the School Board will approve the plan um around the June-July timeframe of each year. And then on that plan, we stated out what are the projects that we are working on. So that will include the Local School Activity Fund, and this is again like Ms. Teresa mentioned, is a requirement by the state of Virginia that we have to do. And this is a quite a big undertaking, because we need to look at all the two hundred sites of all the schools, and which I think is very critically important, because we are doing K-12 education. And of course, what's happening at school, the Local School Activity Fund piece, we need to know. So we have that. We also have the Performance Audits laid out again at the beginning of the uh audit plan to make sure of full transparency. The School Board, community members know kind of what are the types of audits or reviews that we are looking at. And of course, the Special Education Program Review is also part of the fiscal year twenty-one audit plan that our staff invoice um in the planning phase, meaning to collect data to make sure that we have the right scope of work. And then the execution, we have through like a lot of data mining, and then also through interviews with people, benchmarking, et cetera, and then reporting. We normally report back to the Audit Committee first. And then at the recommendation of the Audit Committee, we will present uh further work to the School Board if it seems necessary. And then we also spend a lot of time on follow-up. And again, I mean, as an auditor, I want to make sure is the thorough process that we not just start well, but also end well. So we follow up with um the management to ensure all the recommendations are done and uh trust but verify, we have heard that they have done, but then, okay, show me the supporting documents. So that's kind of like the entire process, and I'm so thankful that you asked me about it, Ms. Omech, because a lot of the people are not doing audit on a day-to-day basis. And I'm sure that it will be helpful for 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 you all to understand a little bit more about our day-to-day.
No, I appreciate that. I I mean, in thinking about, you know, the School Activities Fund, for example, would you say that that's a bulk of the internal audit? You know, I'm just thinking of those number, you said the fifty to sixty percent, up to seventy-five percent of your resources going into internal audits, right? So essentially, what I'm trying to get at, guys, is as it's even to my colleagues, we have a limited amount of tools to be able to do our job well, right? So we we hire the superintendent, we hire the clerk, and we hire the auditor. And that's what we've got. And and so I I'm I'm trying to think of these projects, these these efforts we've done are kind of not traditional when it comes to the special ed review, the fidelity of implementation review. These are new things we've we're trying. But I I'm trying to think of how we might be able to leverage the auditor general for those things that we probably collectively can, you know, can agree, have some questions about um to, in order to do our job well. So that, you know, Esther, I I don't know, maybe if if you can help clarify, you know, how much of these specific requests that come from the board end up taking time versus like the the traditional school resources piece? And and I will say, I know there's a historical component to this too, right? Where there was, you you guys had more of a role under the superintendent at some point. And so that, to me, the School Activities Fund Review seems more operational. Whereas I'm I'm thinking as a board, I mean, there are a million and one things I could think of that we would want to audit or or look into in more depth, right? But we don't have that opportunity, because your resources are being spent on some of these compliance-based things that, in my head, are more operational, I would dare say, perhaps more responsibility than, you know, us. I I hope I clarified what I was going for, maybe you can speak a little bit more to that. And and Karen, I I would love to hear from you too, in directing our board on that.
Yeah, I'll give, I'll give uh Ms. Ko an opportunity to speak, and then I think I have some things I can share that may help.
Sure, and I I would like to start. And I also want, if I may, uh Ms. Madam Chair, to invite my team member, Ms. Teresa Weatherman, to share some of her thoughts too, because she and I have been working to lead this office, you know, to kind of really be innovative. I guess if I hear Ms. Omech's ideas is, hey, could we do something different, right? Like, compliance, I think to me is important, but what else can we do with limited resources, right? So again, for us, we have seven auditors, right? We have one at me, seven auditors. We try to do really above and beyond every minute that we have. So I think that that historically, we have done it via the risk assessment process. So to me, again, risk assessment is important. It is like a first step to really to discuss what are the high-level risk arise to the top, right? Because you may think, one person may think, okay, task A is really important, but I need to have a justification as an auditor, right? Why, like, as a school district as a whole, how do we prioritize our task? So I am very looking forward, because that time is coming up again, fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, sorry, my my numbers are not getting right. That I will be reaching out to all of you to get your thoughts about the focus. As as a group, right, for OAG, we are um have resources. For OAG, we are have resources that, for example, some of us are certified public accountants, certified internal auditors, certified fraud examiners. So we have different qualities of 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 ideas. So we have been focusing on compliance and how could we make our controls and processes flow better? Because again, I always love to go back to our mission. What do we call for us to do as our major framework? So that's kind of how we determine how to decide a time, but of course, each year, the focus can be different. This year, we have COVID coming, and I don't know for next fiscal year, what will be kind of like the emerging risk, right? Like each year, we should take a different lens and be innovative and talk a look at what our our benchmarking, right? Take a look at our surrounding school districts, what are they doing? And also, I think we need to be a leader as well, right? Not just follow what are the other people doing, but be innovative and think about, okay, what may potentially bring FCPS down? That's always what I'm asking myself. That is more from a reputational lens, even though it may not have a huge financial impact. But what can bring us down? So this is some of the considerations that we put in during the risk assessment process. And if I may, I just want to see if Teresa, you have any other thoughts to add to answer abroad questions?
I don't have anything additional. E- essentially, the work that that is being driven that I'm working on is being driven by the audit plan, which is approved by the board. And historically, even though the office had been housed at one point with the superintendent as part of the audit committee, the work of the office has always been driven by the board. As far back as two thousand and six, the audit plans were approved and input by the board. So whatever direction the board is requesting that that Esther include or consider on the risk assessment for consideration to the audit plan, the final results of that risk assessment and the approved plan is what will drive the work that that I supervise with the staff. So I I'm not certain in terms of how the breakdown would be. I don't know if that's something that could be con- determined, or if there's a different direction the board would like to take, that would be taken into consideration through the risk assessment process.
So maybe I should step in and share a little bit of what I've seen just since I've been working with Ms. Cohen and her staff. As as I see it, Ms. Omech, the auditor general and her office works to, as you say, be our eyes and ears out in the field so that we have an independent voice that can report back to us to guide our policymaking. And that has happened on a number of occasions. I think in my early times, there was a lot of discussion regarding sole source contracts, which is why Ms. Cohen's report regarding the reduction in sole source contracts is so significant. Prior to my time, or probably right around the time I was coming on the board, there was a lot of community concern about how are we ending up with so many sole source contracts? Now, that may have been a perception, but our auditor general helped us to address that reputational risk, completed an audit, made recommendations, and it drove how we are dealing currently now dealing with our policy. Similarly, we've looked at conflict of interest issues. That arose out of concerns that the board saw in previous years. We wanted to beef that up so that we could protect the integrity of our relation of our employees' relationships with FCPS and the appearance of impropriety to the public. Therefore, our auditor general made recommendations with respect to how we might improve that policy. So it really is, we, I agree with you, some of the topics when I came on, I said, but these are very ministerial, right? And even if we look at the amount of money, say, for example, the activity fund, we're talking about a very small amount in comparison. So as we've gone on, I have tried to advocate for and still encourage our fellow board members to make recommendations as to how we might be able to use this office to present to the community that we are exercising our role of fiduciary oversight. And and Ms. Cohen has been very effective in helping us to do that. Part of that was the spread review. Part of that is the fidelity of implementation, et cetera. And so we're all the, we don't approve an audit plan without board input. And so that's part of our responsibility is to bring about those ideas of what can be brought. But then we have to go back and talk about whether we have the staff and the resources actually get it done. And so that's sort of the balance that I would offer without boring people any further. Did you want to?
I could have a go back. I'd love one to clarify what I'm going for. But yeah, thanks.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, I think we have Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, thank you. So I'm just pulling up my camera. So I agree with the great line of questioning coming from Ms. Omech and also the information that our auditor general provided along with Ms. Keys Kamara. I'm very proud of the last nine years, the progress that several boards have made in understanding the importance of the office of the auditor general. But I have had concerns that, to Ms. Omech's point, that when the OAG's office is having to expend time on just standard compliance, that it does draw away time from some of the mission-critical audits, performance audits that I think we need. And I'll just cite one example. I think we've needed to do some really careful review of HR practices that, you know, the board is aware where we've had employees come and express concerns about what their experiences have been with investigations and, you know, do we have the proper training? You know, are we looking at how do we run the third-largest employer in Virginia? Are we staffed appropriately? I mean, I think that the HR department is understaffed, they're overwhelmed. Those are examples of where to Esther Co's point so beautifully stated. This is about not just legal and operational and and fiscal responsibility, but reputational responsibility and reputational risk. And so I I just, I could go on and talk further about it, but Ms. Keys Kamara, thank you for citing some of the really important work we've done to date. And again, for anybody who's watching, I'm not trying to single out the HR department. It's just we get a few minutes to say a few things. And and I I think the HR staff have worked exceptionally hard and in COVID. Absolutely, there's no question. But I want HR to have every success possible. And sometimes that requires doing an audit so we can learn what we're doing and benchmark against best practices and bring that forward. So a lot of times, it's not as an issue of staff. It's how do we better train and prepare our staff to do the work? But I also think that we are long past due for also a review of our budget process. I I continue to have concerns about how do we build a three-billion-dollar budget every year? And I think that's another area where we could do some really significant work with the use of our audit office. And I will also put in my plug that I still think that our ombudsman's office is something we should continue to still look at as being part of an independent arm, like the auditor general's office. I can bring a lot of strength to the the great work that can be done with the ombudsman's office. And it's just about independence. So thank you, Ms. Keys Kamara.
Thank you. I don't know if Ms. Cohen, I see her camera went off. I don't know if she, we lost her or not. Oh, no, there she is. Did you want to comment, Ms. Cohen?
Yeah, I just want to thank Ms. McLaughlin, you know, ideas, and I have been taking notes. And I think this is a wonderful exercise, you know, to hear from all the school board members, right, about priorities. And we, I'm looking forward to discuss this further with you all too, because again, risk assessment for the upcoming fiscal year is is very near us. And I know that that we have many different priorities on our plate, of course, return to school and many others. But I also would love to have this opportunity to talk to you all. And it may be looking at the HR department, the budget and other departments, and I would like to get all of your feedback. So really thankful for that.
Thank you. And if I can just give a quick plug in the, as the HR liaison, they wanted to invite all of our board members to that meeting, which will be on February first, which would, one would allow you to hear the report, but also them focusing on the issue of diversity of staff. This is a pause advertisement. But I think that it will help, Megan, in light of your comments, because I think that the audit committee may want to take a serious look at in your suggestion. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, I just wanted to add, I also had the pleasure of being on the audit committee. So I get to work with this incredible team, which I appreciate. I wanted to point out, following along with what Ms. Omech and Ms. McLaughlin are saying, I think one of the things that we have on the list coming up is that fits in this a little bit more creative and needed opportunity is looking at a business continuity plan. You know, that's something we've started the the discussion on, and then it's something that the, you know, the office will be working on. I just, you know, Googled business continuity plan, and, you know, the definition there is, you know, it's an organization's ability to ensure operations and core business functions to ensure that they are not severely impacted by a disaster or unplanned incident that take critical systems offline. I think we've learned the hard way, and starting in March twenty twenty, that, you know, these things actually happen and we need to be prepared. And, you know, we did some things well, we did some things not so well. So I think this is a great opportunity. And maybe, Ms. Cohen, you can talk a little bit more about how you see this this work panning out, you know, looking at, do we have that kind of a plan? What do we need to put in place that we don't have to ensure that we're prepared for things like global pandemics or other things that may come along? So I just wanted to highlight that. It's on our work plan.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. If I may just respond briefly, and I I thank you so much, Ms. Tolan, for highlighting that 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 business continuity plan is coming up in the fiscal year twenty-one approved that audit plan. So we will be taking a look at, we have mentioned about kind of the framework. What is the FCPS overall framework to manage the asterors? And or some unexpected events, right, similar to what COVID was happening? Of course, no one of us can predict this, but do we have guidance in place, right? So once, when it happened, what we are going to do? So we will be doing a, taking a close look at that. We, for now, we framed our audit is we will look at all, you know, the critical departments they are all in. And of course, when when this audit, this audit will commence in a month or two months. And when that happened, we will be doing a lot of planning to see what can be done within the the timeline that we have set up, and then also walk through and present a result with the audit committee. And of course, if we found anything of interest that the full school board should be aware of, we would love to bring it to the work session as well.
Great, thank you. I also just want to make sure the public knows that we do have representatives from the public on our audit committee as well, that are professional, you know, auditors. And they have been extremely helpful in even outlining what this process might be. So I just wanted to give them a little bit of shout-out, and thank you again for your work.
Yeah. Sorry, thanks for mentioning that, because their input is quite invaluable. Ms. Cohen, did you want to say something? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, it was along the same line that you have mentioned with Ms. Omech. That both of our citizen members, they are also certified public accountants, and they have years of industry financial expertise as well. So thank you.
Great. Yes, and Ms. Cohen, I think you shared earlier what the upcoming audits are that we're currently, okay? So I I only see one other hand, and if there's anybody else on the board who wants to mention things for the audit committee to possibly look at, I please encourage you to bring that forward today, because I think that we certainly want to do the groundwork in getting some of those things set up. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you so much. I really appreciate all that Ms. Cohen and her team does in the area of audit. I had the pleasure of serving on the audit committee several years ago for a couple of years. And I have actually three questions. One is in relationship to the citizen members. I know that we went through a process, an application process to fill that role and that they have time-limited terms which are renewable. Could you give us an update on what the timeframe for those existing terms are?
Sure, thank you. And I have a kind of like ideas in my mind, but I also want to ask the the clerk to to make sure that what I just mentioned is right, because I remember, I think that that it was just approved in one of the recent school board meetings that we have currently have two citizen members. One of them has been serving on the audit committee for quite a long time. And he is a veteran citizen member, and I think his preference is to serve until June of this year, June of twenty twenty-one. So I have started to advise Dr. Anderson and Ms. Keys Kamara that that we will need to start the process to to look for a replacement. And then the other citizen member is pretty new, and I believe that his term has been renewed for two years, which will likely end, I would like to say, by June twenty twenty-two.
That does answer my question, and I also urge that when the materials are ready for that application process, that all board members are able to share those materials to get wonderful candidates. My experience last time when we filled those roles was that we had an abundance of talent willing to serve in that capacity. The second area is related to the continuity of operations audit and whether we are looking at that for not only our our infrastructure and our technology, but are we looking at it from the standpoint of succession planning for our leadership team? And the reason I mention this, we know that unfortunately, you know, top talent sometimes has has incidences where they are impacted. And so whether or not we have the structures in place for a true continuity of operations, I hope that that is built into your plan. Lastly, and I will bring this as a recommendation for an audit, is to look at our structures that are in place to do proper program management in the school system, and not only at a micro level, but at a macro level. And what what are the best practices in program management and recommendations on how we can? We may be doing excellent work, but I would like to have that validated through the audit process, because like Ms. Omech, I believe that you play a critical function in helping us do continuous process improvement and not just resting on the laurels of Fairfax County. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. May I respond to question two and three now? So for question two, we definitely will put that into consideration, Ms. Corbett Sanders, about the succession plans, which is very important to me, I believe, to a successful continuity plan. So I take a big note here, we're definitely making sure that we consider this as part of the planning process. So that's number two. And for the third question, So that's number two. And for the third question, yes, so if I may just rephrase what you just said is to make sure I understand is to take a look not only for individual program basis, but to take a look at the overall framework, right, for FCPS. Do we have some like governance or some protocol or some industry best practices to follow when we talks about different programs management? And within FCPS, we have so many programs, right? I think what you are suggesting is to take a holistic look at how we, am I right?
You are absolutely right. This is all about having a culture of proper program and project management. And so the most sophisticated and successful organizations do have a culture for that. And what are the pieces that we need to have in place to ensure that we have that culture?
Sure, thank you. Thank you. I would take note of that and include it in the upcoming risk assessment. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I see two hands that have been up before. Ms. Omech, it looks like you want to go back and Ms. Tolan? Did, or do you have your hand up for a go back? Okay, all right, Ms. Omech?
Yeah, to further illustrate the potential of what we could do here, I'm glad Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Tolan kind of fleshed out where I was going. You know, to answer your question, Karen, of ideas, right? So we've been talking about, for example, young scholars and we're like, we want to add all this funding to AARTs and young scholars. That's going to be the solution. We have no data to prove it. That's something where we could say, all right, does this, does our implementation match up with our stated objectives? And is this worth continuing to invest in? That's an example. You know, another example is the selection of AAP to begin with. If we have stated certain policies and processes, are those consistent? Where are there disparities across the county? That's another example. I can pretty much list any equity or access related policy and it is in our interest to look into, to be honest with you, from an audit perspective. When it comes to access with language, for example, we say we're trying to reach everyone, every student by name and by need. Do we actually provide documents? I guarantee you, I would be really interested in looking at that audit, right? Do we actually do that? To follow our stated policy in languages that families need? When it comes to principal selection, we claim we reach out to the entire school community. That's our policy. That's how we do the process. Who's really hearing about it? Do we actually send out an email? Do we send it out in the various languages the community needs? Do we meet people where they're at? I think we all have a hunch to know that we could do a lot better. But the fidelity of implementation on any of these equity issues is something important. Public hearings, we post it as a school board and we say the entire community knows about it. The entire community can come out and speak. Is that, is the implementation of that consistent with our stated objective? I meant to say no. I have a long list of these, but the point is to illustrate again, I think this year maybe to be constructive, we should have a process. If truly in the business action plan, we're going to talk about it, or business continuity plan, we're going to talk about it. I'd like to make sure the audit piece is a critical component, not just kind of a, you know, like a formulaic approval. But anyway, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Omech. I think, I don't think Dr. Anderson has spoken before, and then we'll go to Ms. McLaughlin for a go back. Ms. Corbin Sanders, do you have your hand up for a go back as well? Okay, we'll figure that out later. Go ahead.
Thank you. Should I go?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to very briefly echo what Ms. Omech is saying regarding us making sure that we're using the Audit Committee to support the initiatives of the school board. So I just wanted to lend some support to that, but I also wanted to continue to highlight what you yourself said, Ms. Keys Kamara, which is we direct the work of the auditor. So we can include all of those items, Ms. Omech, that we should be looking at to see is our thinking, our actions, our votes, are they matching the practices that are taking place in FCPS? Those are the things that we need to bring forward when we have those individual conversations with Esther Coe for us to collectively determine where is it that we want to go? So I just wanted to kind of underscore those two points. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, is your hand up for a go back?
It is. Yep. So I wanted to just follow up, Ms. Coe, because as you're also aware, the superintendent is about to present his proposed budget to the public and the board. And it sort of ties in nicely to be asking you, if you haven't already had this conversation with the superintendent, but certainly here with the board, is there additional staffing needs that you see for your office? As we talk about the incredible importance of doing these performance audits to help not just the board, but I truly believe help the superintendent and help his leadership team. I believe everybody is dedicated to wanting FCPS to be the premier school system, that it has built its reputation for decades, but you can't achieve that premier performance if you're not constantly assessing and growing and changing and improving. So I know we want to demonstrate through our actions, not just our words about that commitment. And so since I have you here, is it just to kind of prep everybody? Are you thinking that maybe some additional staffing might be needed? And if so, go ahead and speak to that.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about that. I think when I take a look at our staffing and compare, you know, to our neighboring districts or the biggest school districts in the US, we are comparable. I think in some way, we are a little bit less than the others. But at the same time, it's depending on what functions fall under the audit shop as well. Some of the audit shop, and I'm sure Ms. McLaughlin, your family, that they call themselves is the Inspector General. They also do a lot of like HR investigations and other items that is currently not fallen under my office. So I think for now, if we are keeping looking at, you know, processes, controls, I think our office is can be, you know, is adequate, you know, to focus on those areas. And if I hear correctly, right, from the various school board members, that the focus, if it is going to be on program evaluation, right, that I heard like talking about the specific programs. Looking at the process, right, as Ms. Corbin Sanders has mentioned earlier, this is something that we can do with our existing talents. Because that's what I am trained to do as a CPA, as a certified internal auditors. But currently, in our, in our work group, we do not have anyone who is trained to serve as a program evaluator. We have, and I know that we have previous discussion at the Audit Committees. So if this is something that the Audit Committee and the school board, I'm sorry, is looking for my office to do more, then I see that we would need to repurpose either some of the existing role that we have or remaining to hire the right individuals to be able to deliver those work. And because currently we do not have those expertise. So I just want to be transparent with you all, right, about what we can and what we cannot do. And I think that it will be dependent upon the guidance and direction from the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. I do want to really emphasize here that for those of us who served on the prior boards, we pushed so hard to get the Office of the Auditor General. Many of us were advocating for the Inspector General structure so that we could have as independent and robust operation as possible. We were guided against that. And so I've run out of time, but I will just say to my colleagues, I think it's time that we revisit that examination as one of the largest school systems in the country. And I think we want to certainly utilize Esther and her team as best as possible. And we can always get better even in how we structured the OAG versus an OIG. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. So I will, I think, Ms. Corbin Sanders, are you raising your hand again for a go back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just very quickly, and it's really a 30-second question. Ms. Coe, would you have the capability to work with this board in developing a decision support structure with the one Fairfax framework, putting one Fairfax at the center of it? What I'm looking for is a tool or a process that the board would be able to utilize when making decisions associated with programs, boundaries, budget, or any other decision we make as a collective board to make sure we are doing it with the one Fairfax mindset, kind of picking up on what Dr. Anderson mentioned a few minutes ago.
So I think Ms. Corbin Sanders is a great idea and we can navigate that further. My only first thoughts come to mind is about independence. So I know that we have been really working hard and to protect that. And I'm sure all the school board members are working with me on that. So one thing I would try to be cognizant is we can advise, but we could not provide a framework, so to speak. So we can talk further, Ms. Corbin Sanders, to understand like, kind of like your thought process on this, and then maybe we can work something out. But that just comes first to my mind is about independence.
I absolutely understand that. And obviously, we wouldn't want you to compromise your independence. But I do think as a collective body, one in which equity is a central or a foundation of our policy or of our mindset, I believe, a shared goal by this collective body, I would like to have some sort of structure that we could utilize together so that it makes it easier for us to stay focused on that, those equity goals. So I will be happy to come and speak with you. And then I think I may have to bring this as a forum topic.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Corbin Sanders. Prior to me realizing you had your hand up, I was about to say I have written out a giant next step based on our conversation today. What I hear my colleagues saying inappropriately so is that we want to continue this movement toward the use of the Auditor General more or less toward the rope types of things that have, you know, such as activity funds and more toward really supporting our policy-making, decision-making. I have taken notes on what people have suggested. And so I will follow up with our board members and seek input so that I can discuss it with the Auditor General. I will say I am very, very interested in looking at HR, particularly because we are at a point now where we have to hire a new Assistant Superintendent for that particular role. And so it opens up a door to really influence or at least speak into that decision-making in a way that this board finds will be helpful toward our policy objectives. And so that is part of the reason the board members were invited to the next meeting. We've got some amazing folks on that committee. I won't belabor that. But I will say my next step will be to further hear from my board members as to what those priorities are and then work with our Auditor General as to how that fits with her resources at this time. So that is where I am. Ms. Corbin Sanders, did you put your hand back up or is that leftover from before? Okay. All right, unless I don't see any more hands, I'm going to suggest that we use the next five minutes to get ready for the next part of our return to school discussion. But I do thank all of my colleagues for this discussion, and I think it's been very fruitful. And I thank you, Ms. Coe, as always, for being the professional and supporting us in such excellence. So thank you very much. And we will begin again at 3 o'clock.